So I was like, I'm done.
All right, we'll call to order the Tuesday, January thirteenth, three P M school board workshop. Let's rise for a moment of silence and let's pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will do roll call.
Lauren Ramirez present, Jeannie Ruddy present.
Wolfery present.
Kristi Chong present.
Let's all come on.
Down here, do we have any additions or changes to the agenda?
We do not have any.
I get a motion to approve our agenda today.
Will approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have anybody for public comment today?
We do not.
Move on to finance consent. Seven point zero one, imagine charter schools.
Gage and you, Madam Chair, Board Member, and Superintendent Moore. Mrs. Bush and I are here to answer any questions you have on finding consent items today.
Any or just the?
Starting with seven point zero one, imagine charter schools.
Nothing on seven point zero what? We'll move on to seven point zero two, purchase orders over ten thousand.
Go back to my list and make sure it's under. I did have a question related to the purchase order for the professional practices of New Horizons Education. I'm all for professional development and I was just wondering what the the program itself is hoping to target and the value we hope to realize from it.
Sure. So this is a consultation group that will be working with our students with significant developmental needs, particularly autism, that have some really complex communication needs. So it focuses on verbal behavior. We had the first part of them was coming to do a full day verbal behavior training for those, for our behavior specialists and those teachers. And then they'll be coming back to provide consultation for the remainder of the school year so that we can get that program set up in those self-contained classrooms.
Okay. Can you clarify why that program was restricted to just a few schools?
So it is for, right now funded for pre-K, Wadsworth, Vanelle, and Beltare. We did not have that self-contained setting in Rimfire. I do, I do think we have some students that could be identified, that maybe identified that could benefit from it here. And, and Old Kings already had a program in place.
Okay, okay, great. So what are the things that you're hoping to, I guess, monitor that we know adoption of these instructional practices have been absorbed?
Sure. So there, we will have a, like a program integrity checklist, fidelity checklist that we will be going through and monitoring both during our instructional walks. And then Dr. Wright, our E S E coordinator, will be, will be doing that as well. So that is built, kind of built in to the implementation and we expect to, we expect to see great outcomes. I have implemented this particular program in other settings like that in, in another state and it showed great outcomes in terms of increasing communication for those students.
Great to hear.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for the information.
Absolutely.
I have a couple of questions on this agenda item. The, the transportation portable. I was over at transportation earlier today and it looked like some were being delivered today. Is that what those are?
I'll have Mr. Bush come up and speak to that.
Yes, that, those are the, there should have, well, we saw two of the other two were there.
There was like three, maybe even, well, maybe there's two halves that they put together.
There'll be a total of four which are, which are coming today and then they'll start putting them together hopefully this week.
All right, and is that, are those replacing the older structures that were there or are those being added to?
No, the older ones were removed and those are being replaced in that same location.
Excellent. And then the, those, were they, were they marketable to sell or were they at a stage where they?
Those were actually leased.
Oh, they were leased?
Yes, so we worked with them because we, we've had them for a very long time and we were having a lot of problems with them. So we worked with them where they, they took the cost of removing them. We're usually, whenever we have portables removed, there's a cost to us. But they, the mobile module worked with us on because of the issues. And then we actually purchased these portables. They're, they're going to be district owned so that way we have the ability to maintain them to our standards. Unlike when they're leased, you're kind of at their will.
And what is the, what are the, what is the published economic life of these for, just for future expectations?
They estimate between twenty to twenty-five years. And again, that goes back to how do you take care of, what is the maintenance and the protection that you do on, on those? You know, a leased one, I would say probably struggles to make it that far. But us owning them is definitely going to be, we're going to maintain them a lot better than a leased portable.
I'm sure you'll get thirty to forty out of it.
Well, I won't know, sir, because I won't be here, but sure.
And then another question is on the wrap, the wrap. That's off on that particular one. But unless you have something about the, it was vinyl wrapping of the doors at Matanzas High School.
Yes, sir. That, that's us.
Okay.
So the, one of the things that we're trying out is we have on our exterior doors primarily, we have a lot of the wear and tear and the paint because of the fading and stuff. And with the way the wrapping and the, we're trying to see how that works. And the cost of wrapping them is substantially less. It goes a lot quicker. Those, when you have to do the painting you're talking about, especially the exterior doors, it's got to be done after hours or on the weekends just because you can't do it during school where the wrapping is substantially so much faster. The doors are not wet. They can come in and knock them out in, I'm going to say, a quarter of the time. And then there's a lot less disruption with the school as well. So we did that at the, at the auditorium. The, if you, when you go there, those doors, they're black now, but they, they were wrapped. So we're wanting to do some of those and see how they fare and how will they do just because of the?
And this is similar to like to when people wrap a car or something, same kind of concept?
Yep.
And so do they, I mean, do we have any idea of the durability of these things?
Well, that's kind of one of the things that we want to test to see how, how well they'll fare from the sun. You know, the, the wear and tear, we believe they will fare well. It's more of the weather, inclement weather and the sun that we're wanting to see how that wears.
Okay, sounds good. And I would imagine since a wrap, we can, we can decorate them in some cases with the school logo and things like that.
Correct. I mean, there's a lot of things we just, we got with the school and we did certain color, you know, colors. But moving forward, if it's something that works well, that was also something that we looked into that they would be able to do some logos and different things, but we didn't want to, we wanted to walk before we started running.
No, I think it's a good test case to see if it's a better technology and more efficient than. And do we, do we normally, do we do the wrap or did the outside company do?
No, we hired a company that comes in and they, they wrap them.
And when we paint the doors, are we using our, our staff for that typically or do we contract that out?
Usually contract on the exterior depending on, I mean, if it's one door or something like that, then, then we. But there's a lot of prep that goes into painting and it's not just painting the doors. So again, that's kind of where going into the wrap, they, they have some prep work, but nowhere near because you're covering it up generally.
Yeah, believe me, I know that. I've taken on some painting jobs and I've said no, never again.
Yes, so.
That's great. Oh, thank you for that. Appreciate the conversation.
Interesting, yeah.
That's all I have.
Any others?
Are we still on seven point oh two or are we moving to seven oh three?
We are on seven point zero two.
Okay, I'm good for seven zero two.
Moving on to seven point zero three, vendor payments.
Yeah, I had a few here that I was interested in, particularly around Swan Solutions. It looks like a new service for food preparation or food service?
Food service?
Yes.
It is. We're going to tag team this because this, this was acquired under my leadership in food services and Mike is continuing on with the building and utilization of the platform. So Swan Solutions is there, this, what you see on the vendor payment is for their finance module. It's new. Prior to us having a finance module for school food service, managing our finances looked something like extracting data from multiple platforms, Skyward, Department of Ag's website, there's many. And then we would pull that data into some sort of spreadsheet and then we manually monitor the spreadsheet. Mike did bring up, I'm going to kick this to him pretty quickly. The capabilities of the system, I'm happy to give you all the information you want, but it's an A I based, well, it's A I integrated, I shouldn't say based, dashboard sort of system whereby it's very easy to get the data into it. It doesn't take manual keying. It gets intuitive enough to, we pull a Sky, a report out of Skyward, we can upload it and it reads the data and puts it into the appropriate fields so that we can see the data just in time. That's one thing. We don't have to worry about integrating it or having it talk to any other systems or any kind of security concerns with it being integrated or talking to a system directly. It's just, I, it's, it's a really exciting system. So I acquired it under my leadership and then I started to build it and then Mike came to town and he is continuing on with it.
We are going to town with this thing. Actually uploaded four reports while I was waiting back there to, we're up to date as of the end of December for finance. To piggyback off, so we've been in the business, I've been twenty-five years. There was never anything like this where you could just go to one platform and get everything. It does, we pull reports from Skyward, we pull reports from Primero Edge, which is our point of sale software, F Dax for reimbursement, throws it all in here and I can churn and burn lots of data. It's the first four months we've done it, so we're still kind of tweaking it. What's really great about this opportunity for this company right now is they're, the two, the two folks that own it have been in food service, point of sale for as long as I have been in school food service. They, they saw this need and they're, I think we're one of maybe five districts right now that's fully implementing it. So the customer service, I get a report from Skyward, they make it work exactly for us in a matter of a day.
So this is where you're taking data from other systems, pulling it in. That needs to be manual because it's not integrated or else we'd have FERPA issues, right?
Yes.
So then, it's then analyzing that data to tell you if you're on, is it just budget related or is also nutrition values?
This is really about, really about expenses. There are some, some efficiencies to go forward to next month, next week's. That's the word I'm looking for. Your efficiencies for next, it does meals per labor hour.
Okay.
Oh, strategic plan.
Strategic plan, thank you. So it can, it can pull that information for us. It has inventory value reports because pulling information from that. Ultimately, it's, are you, are you efficient, are you making money, et cetera?
Okay.
It is, it's an all-in-one.
And all of that used to be some manual analysis you would have to do?
It used to be a lot of spreadsheets.
Great.
If somebody typed the wrong number, you didn't know.
Sure.
This, we, P D I, or download our invoices, it scans them, puts the items in the right category according to red book.
And if I could add on the invoices, that's very important because for compliance sake, one of the things that's important for us to do is bump up all of our invoices for food especially against what the contract says the pricing should be. And if you can imagine nine schools times weekly deliveries times several sheets of each invoice and line items, that's been very cumbersome in the past and, and we've had some manual ways to do that too and it takes a lot of time. This system allows us to put everything into one area and then it'll pop the discrepancies for us so that we can, we can address them very quickly.
It generates a letter with the invoice, what the price should be, what was charged, how much they owe. Right now we're owed about two hundred dollars. Not huge, but we'll get, it's, you know, again, it's a process of building the data to get the comparisons. But it, it's, I hate to geek out on numbers because I'm not a numbers guy, but I'm geeking out on what this thing can do in real time. I can compare month to month and, you know, next year we have a year of data.
Year over year.
We can go back and compare what's going on.
And will it be able to absorb if in the future we have the need to bring back either a partial or a full charge for, let's say, school lunches and things of that nature? It's able to handle the point of sale type of work?
Yep. Pull all that information in.
Beautiful.
It's going to be, and I'm, I'm happy to meet with you, any of you, and show you this and just make sure you. Make sure you put a lot of time because I will just sit here and talk.
We went from walking to driving a cattle.
Yes.
It's not even an upgrade. It's just like, life's going to be nice.
Reimagining your whole role as well.
My former district is already looking at it. They have a lot of transition going on there as well, but they'll be jumping on it too. It just makes sense.
And it really aligns to our strategic plan of operational efficiency.
Absolutely.
One of the things that we've worked on this year is we've had a lot of things that we've had to manually pull, manually enter, and it does leave room for errors, but it also does not allow for you to have just timely information at your fingertips so that we can make decisions in real time. And this will allow for us to do that. And so it is, yeah, one of these systems that we're bringing on to make that happen. We've been able to do that with, in the academic world by partnering with N F E C that we can go in and manipulate the data and see it real time versus having to go to someone, pull the report and do some other things with it.
And then I imagine this is saving a lot of time where you can be more impactful, actually supporting the different sites and growing their, your staff, so, great.
Eventually, it would be nice to have the managers be able to scan in their own and take it out of the district's, district office side. Right now, I'm doing it just to try to make sure we're doing anything right.
Yeah.
Next year, it might be when they get their invoice and they scan it right in, it's done. They can even speed things up that much better.
A little division of tasks.
Let nine people do it instead of one.
Right.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's game changing for food service. I really think it's going to, it's going to be very good for us.
Great.
Money well spent, I can assure you.
Fascinating. Not, not for food services, I appreciate it.
All right.
I was also curious to learn, this might be Mr. Bush. I see we've done some improvements or additions to play, playgrounds and equipment. I'm excited to hear about this.
Well, when I received your email, I had to do a little digging because plant services, although we were overseeing, that came from the school and primarily a lot of that was Wadsworth, that they, they had the need for playground and they did that at the facility and we just managed that through there. So when you asked about the, on the capital plan, it's, it's not on our capital plan because it wasn't, it didn't come out of the plant service bucket, if you would.
So that school district over the past couple of years has visited with each elementary school and their needs for playground. Old Kings, Vanelle, Beltare were all handled. And I want to say Rimfire and Wadsworth were the last two.
Mm-hmm.
So this came out of?
Rimfire actually was a niche, the start of it because we started with the, the pre-K, their pre-K playground area needed to be updated and then we started, yeah. So it was in the, it was for specifically for the V P K areas where they were the initial.
Thank you. So Wadsworth was the final one then, thank you, Ms. Moore. And that was handled this year. We started it last year and that comes out of the district funds.
Okay.
We tend to try to visit each school each year. A couple of years ago, we did ban for the secondary. It just depends on what the needs are. So this was the last school.
Okay. So this is the completion of a multi-year throughout all of the elementary schools that require some playground equipment. And you guys facilitated the purchasing and procurement installation and all that great stuff?
And manage it and oversee it with the contractor.
Buying and leasing with the schools and then pulls in plant services.
So were these replacements of equipment or new equipment, like additions?
Specifically for Wadsworth, they were, it was very old. It was just rusted, caused tears and, and clothes.
Oh, yeah.
And just trying to update it to the best that we can. We have a system for tracking this in our school district. If you look at the project fund, three, seven, four, oh, five. We use that in finance that shows additional funds that the district gives so that we make sure it's not come out of their own F F and E.
Yeah, okay.
So that's how we track that.
Yeah. I hope these playground people solve for the spacing between bars because I'm pretty sure every school has a dedicated container of Vaseline to get knees and heads dislodged from the bars. It is, it's a true story.
It's not just us, it's every school.
No, it's every school, yes. Thank you so much for that. And I think the last piece is, again, I, I keep asking about the engineering services, H A contracting and Mattern Professional Engineering. Just again, wondering about, you know, the work that that is being attributed to. Are we happy with those, that quality in alignment with the budget on the, on the initiatives that they're being procured for?
So for the, the H A and Matern, that was the addition for Matanzas and the final payment is, is in process right now.
You know, I like have this marked on my calendar. And you're like, oh.
You and me both.
It'll be the last time Mr. Bush is going to ask me this.
I, I hope that next month that we'll be bringing the, I'd like to bring that to the board just to close out the addition of where we ended up, how that all went. I'm happily to say that we are nearing the end of that, that project, so.
Wonderful. And then the Mattern Professional Engineering?
Oh, Matern, they're, no, that's okay. We use, they're our engineer that we use at multiple different projects as far as our C E P, whether it's mechanical heavily, but they also do electrical plumbing and very much their, we reach out. but they also do electrical plumbing and very much their, we reach out to them on a lot of different things. They are the engineer record for the FPC project for the chiller that we did there and also at the Matanzas. That we're in the process of starting and doing the same thing up there that we have done at, at FPC. And I'm gonna be going, bringing toward the end of this month, a little, an energy update, kind of talk a little bit about some of those things that, that we're doing to try to save money, be better, you know, when equipment gets older, they don't, they run, but they may not run as efficiently as we need to, so.
Was your team here right before Christmas regarding the water, was it the sprinklers that went off at the?
We, we were here, I mean, it's.
Well, we appreciate it and, you know, Old Kings, now GSP. It always happens at the most inopportune time and usually the middle of the night, right?
I will, I will say that Sven, our attorney, saved, fortunately, the county side, because this is going through the county and their insurance, but saved them a lot because he called me Saturday night and said, Cory, there's water coming from the ceiling. And I'm like, where are you at? And he told me, sent me a video and I'm like, oh, so, yeah. Had he not been here, that could have.
Saturday night before the holidays.
Yeah, that may have been Monday, yes. That may have been Monday before somebody.
It would have been Monday, yes.
For sure.
Yeah, it could have been a lot worse.
And it was a lot of water.
Yes.
It was at that time already, so, yes.
Well, thank you guys, appreciate it, that's all I've got.
Thank you.
All right, any other on, any others on seven point zero three? We'll move on to seven point zero four, relation of inventory.
Automotive tool cabinet from 1991, say we got our money's worth out of that.
That's gonna be that portable, Mr. Bush just got us.
All right, seven point zero five, finance budget amendments. Seven point zero six, district financial statements. Seven point zero seven, self-insurance actuary statement.
This is our annual report that we have to file with the actuary for our self-insurance program. They do an analysis of financially, financial data that I send them. According to Florida statute, if you're self-insured, you have to have 60 days of claims available in your reserve fund. So that's what this actuary report is. We have met that ever since we've gone self-insured, so we continue to do meet that and we do analyze it throughout the year. So this is a very positive report.
So we need to have 60 days minimum of claims in our reserves? Okay, historically, have we, like, where, where does the value in that, in our fund compare to previous years? Are, are we?
We are definitely lower this year than we have been in previous years. It ebbs and flows depending on claims.
Yeah.
This is all claims driven, but this is one of the, the lower years that we have been. That being said, we still beat it and like I said, we have our brokerage firm that continues to help monitor this. We are definitely, in talking with senior cabinet and our superintendent, making sure that we're monitoring the impacts of the wellness center and how that impacts our claims here, so that's definitely an ongoing analysis that we continue to look at.
And if you'll share just briefly some of the information that'll be coming before them around just the impact we've seen over the last, you know, two months related to claims?
Sure, so in talking with Superintendent Moore, just in the past couple of weeks, we have, I mean, we get, the Florida Blue claims come on a weekly basis and we are required to obviously wire this money out. We have seen large claims, I will say for the month of December, one week was 500,000, one was 300 plus thousand, the next was almost 200,000. So in talking to Superintendent Moore a couple of weeks ago, this is something we're gonna continue to heavily monitor and senior cabinet with myself and Mr. Uled as well with the team because it's, it's getting to a crucial point. Like I said, this is kind of a lower percentage than we've seen. So it's something we definitely need to be on top of and we are, we are definitely looking at it.
Yeah, and our insurance committee, they'll see this information and kind of talk through it and look at what, you know, what is this the result of? You know, are, have we seen some new, recent major illnesses or major surgeries or thing, treatments that have had to happen? But that type, those things impacts, you know, what we have available in our reserve. And so more of that information will become, will come before you. But as Ms. Moore McSaid, it ebbs and flows, it's up and down, but it's, it's volatile in the sense of it really depends on the claims that we're getting and it's, it's harder for us to really control that, you know, because.
And the cost of healthcare rising, but seems like this is even probably more of a contributing factor in the decision around joining fleet where a lot of their services is to essentially help us increase our reserves through the risk management program. So I'm glad that we've all had an opportunity to chat one on one with them.
Yeah, and on that, just a note on that is that as we come back with information, the first thing that comes to my mind is where, are these, were these a significant one-time event? Are these, do we anticipate them to be reoccurring? If we have, if it was a large event, did we need our stop gap, stop loss on these? To see that, how this might affect the plan going forward or is this just a one-time big hit?
It's, unfortunately, we have our fixed costs with our broker, with our, we have several annual fees that we pay stop loss, that we pay monthly. Unfortunately, the claims is the main variable cost. It is something that we cannot control, we cannot predict. Some of them do hit stop loss, I have not seen much stop loss this year yet. I will tell you the one thing that's helping us is the rebates that we do continue to get. We just got another quarter of rebates, but the claims is something that we cannot predict.
No, can't predict, but I guess one, one area is, could some of these, hi, Mr. Walker. Could some of these claims have been mitigated if they use the well to center or are these VR visits or the major? I mean, are these across many members or were these large events on one?
I will, I will defer to Mr. Walker, I don't see the details of that information.
So good afternoon, board. So we get information probably about two months delay based on when it actually happens as far as getting in-depth information on what claims we're seeing. So when finance is seeing like, hey, this has been a bad week for claims, we don't get in-depth detail on that until about a month to two months after that. So what we will be doing is that kind of triggers the, the red flag for us to make sure that we are getting in touch with Brian and Brown going, hey, you guys are in that data feed pretty regularly, what are you guys seeing? So that when we have our collaborative conversations with Communitas and Florida Blue, how can we best use our active resources to help navigate our folks to using the most appropriate center of care? Whether it has to be an urgent care or whether it can be the wellness center. So those are all things we're taking in and we'll be looking at it for, especially with December as, you know, flu season and things like that start to climb.
So about February, you're anticipating to get the granular data on December?
So for instance, just this week, we got the information through November. So I would imagine probably around this time in February, we'll be able to kind of see where we ended up with December.
Okay.
And also with the wellness center, so I'm imagining, I'm hearing great feedback, so potentially people are going in, they haven't been seen in 10, 20, 30 years and now that, you know, they're finding an issue and then they're getting things taken care of. So hopefully, that is happening for prevention, but then maybe potentially it's just, you know, that one big thing they should have gotten 20 years ago. But again, you'll know that more.
And another thing that we see, unfortunately, many educators wait to go to the doctor on time when they don't have to take time off. And so we know, we see people during the summer, they're going to the doctor and so it may increase during that time or spring break or winter break. And so once the insurance committee and HR, they get that information, they'll be able to really sift through it and be able to identify, okay, what is it and then what are our next steps in order to address whatever is causing it to, or causing it to have been increased during that time. But it could be, and to your point, we'll be able to see, is this a one-time thing or is this something we can expect to see occurring, yeah?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you.
Thank you.
We're moving on to human resources consent, ten point zero one. Mr. Walker.
Moore, today before you, we have a job description for a behavior analyst position. So I have Dr. O'Brien here to kind of provide some background on this position.
Sure, so this is a request for approval of a new job description. This is not for a new allocation, what we're looking to do here is tier out our behavior team that lives in the ESE department. So we currently have eight allocations for behavior specialists. We have three vacancies right now, we are really struggling to recruit for those positions and that's not uncommon or new for us. One of the things that we've found that is, within that behavior specialist job description, which is an instructional role, we have folks anywhere from having a bachelor's degree all the way up to post master's degree and board certification that fall within that job description with the same pay. And so it's difficult to be able to hire for a behavior analyst within that job description. So really, our goal here is to, is to tier out that, that behavior team, be able to have a professional who can supervise, who's certified, can build up that behavior specialist team. And so when, when folks are in the behavior specialist role, they're, they're typically in school to become a behavior analyst, but then they become one and we're losing them. They're leaving because there's no pathway for them within that role. And so our hope is to be able to grow our current team. We have several people that are sitting for board certification or within their programs to be able to fill this position.
What is, so for the qualifications, I know the, for number two, the board certification, the BCBA, I know that's an extremely hard certification. So from this new job description, what is it specifically that has been updated? Just, this is the brand new, just specifically for them, okay?
This job description does not exist, we currently have a behavior specialist job description, so we would keep both.
You're trying to essentially get a more skilled individual, which would mean that this would probably be a higher pay grade?
Yes.
So what would be the budgetary impact on this?
We currently fund these positions through our, through IDEA, so we would need to allocate for, we would need to adjust the budget for that, that position. But it's, it would be moving to a different pay lane, which I believe starts.
It has it under four, this one is.
Yeah, I think I pulled that up real quick.
And right now, so are you asking, are we trying to change the three remaining open positions to this particular level or just the one? You said you had three vacancies.
We do have three vacancies. I, I think down, down the road, we would move to open, flipping two of those allocations. Right now, we would just flip one of those allocations.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're saying the goal is that since we're hiring somebody who has this advanced BCBA and master's degree, that we would end up retaining them longer because somebody isn't getting that and then their expertise is going beyond that role, so they're leaving?
They're leaving because one of the primary reasons is that their pay can jump up to $40,000 immediately by getting that certification.
BCBA?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, this is a very, very difficult certification to get and so I understand the role is.
If you'll talk to, if you'll talk a little bit to, to the opportunity to provide support, supervision to our current behavior specialists that are in force and how much those individuals are paying right now for supervision because of the structure we have.
Yeah, so we, we have multiple behavior specialists right now who, in order to get to the point of sitting for their board exam, they have to accrue supervision hours or clinical hours. And right now, they have to pay for a supervisor that's outside of our organization to provide that. And that's typically, it depends on the supervisor, but can run between 40 and 80 dollars an hour for them to accrue that time. And so what we really want to be able to do is be able to grow our own in-house. We cannot right now provide that supervision for our behavior specialists.
Can you extrapolate a little bit about how you see this role working with Dr. Halliday? Because now we're saying, okay, we're not just delivering services or supporting staff, we're now analyzing the program, which, you know, as she's leading that department, how do you see that role kind of either collaborating? Or is it taking some of the pieces from her role?
Yeah, so, so right now, she's the direct supervisor of our eight behavior specialists. So, you know, first and foremost, this role would be able to supervise those other behavior specialists and be able to provide them that content expertise in, in behavior. So I think that they could get a nice quality supervision in that respect. Right now, we have a lead behavior specialist that we can do through our, the bargaining, through our instructional contract, but they're not providing, they're not evaluating, they're just acting as kind of like a grade level lead would. I would certainly envision this person working within our MTSS leadership team. So we have a core team that really evaluates our supports that go from tier one, you know, to tier three to ESE. That's a, a big focus of ours right now is just that and strengthening our tier one because we're seeing a lot of student concerns jumping straight to tier three or, you know, working through eligibility when we really need to focus on strengthening that, that tier one and tier two support from a behavioral MTSS lens. So they would certainly work with Dr. Halliday. I would anticipate them taking a little bit of the burden off of her, being directly involved in, in all of those conversations and, and meetings and planning and, and really be able to do some program evaluation in this role.
And when we have students with extremely complex behaviors, like we've been put in a position where we've had to go outside of the organization to contract with an analyst that can come in and provide support. And so bringing those things to the, your question about the, the financial impact of it, bringing all of the pieces that we're, we're having to outsource as well as what we lose as we turn over individuals and being able to bring some depth to our behavior program. And we're also doing that in the lens of, you know, professional learning that we're providing to our paraprofessionals and such so that we have people, we have individuals at each level that are well-trained and well-versed in the area specifically of behavior.
Great, more proactive planning implementation. So on the HR side, the folks who are currently sitting in the role, that's the step down from here, they would be able to apply for this role and then that, are we saying that, okay, well now you're a behavior analyst, but, or are we saying that the, that would create an opening in the role before? So is it that essentially they're either the behavior analyst or their role lower and they, this is a career step?
Yes.
It is a career step, but they must have the qualifications. So not all of them possess the qualifications to apply for this position.
I guess that's the question, what if they did?
Yeah, they, they would be eligible to apply and it would be seen as a.
But we're capping a certain number of these people as with these roles.
Yes, yes.
I see, okay.
Because right now, from what I'm gathering, the behavior analyst without the credentialing is making the same as those with the credentialing?
Yes.
Okay, so that, and that completely makes sense because other districts, I mean, it's very, you have the credential, you know, like counselors, you know, they, they're not specifically a counselor until they complete those hours in that credentialing, so, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? We move on to seven point zero two.
So board in front of you is a revised copy of the chief of human resources job description. It's been revised to correct minor errors slash edits and to align job qualifications to current hiring trends, all while providing flexibility to hiring managers.
I'd like to discuss just with the board, Ms. Chair, if you feel it's appropriate. if you feel it's appropriate to discuss the possibility of procuring a search a search agency for a role that that's this important as opposed to posting it internally?
Well, that that this would this would fall under the superintendent's purview for working with human resources to do to do that. What? I'm just confused because this is about the job description. Do you want to write in the job description that we would hire an outside?
No.
I just I wanted to understand where you were.
I think that's the I wanted permission from the the Board Chair to open a discussion around, are we advertising this as a as we do all other typical openings? Or are we interested in having a conversation to see and or recommend that the path of working with an agency essentially recruiter for a role at this level of strategic significance?
I think I could put that in my Board member request because I don't think it's related to this job description right now.
And for the benefit of the public, this job description is being updated. However, this job description, this job, this position, we do anticipate it being posted after if approved by the Board after approval for this role as we do anticipate the current employee, the current Chief of H R retiring this year. That will be the same for our Chief of Operation position that is before you as well. We do anticipate if and when approved by the Board for these changes or if it's not approved, these changes aren't approved by the Board. We do anticipate posting these positions as early as February as we begin to search for Chief of Operations and Chief of Human Resources.
Mr. Walker, in the qualifications, for H R personnel, aren't there specific certifications, especially when you get to the level of the Director of H R type of role, like SHRM? Or there's other acronyms that I'm not aware of. But would that that would be appropriate, even though those are typically business-related for even a school district? Why do we not put those specific qualifications? Because, you know, just knowing how now people are using A I tools to screen and or let's say LinkedIn is recommending roles, those three criteria there, just in the qualifications, are very lean and I think would probably maybe get additional resumes that definitely would not meet the mark. So should we consider adding as well as a supervisory component there?
So I believe the the intent behind making these adjustments, especially making number three to preferred, is all about adding flexibility to that search, right? When you're casting a wide net hoping to entice folks to apply to a position such as Chief, you want to make sure you are casting a wide net, right? And you don't want it to be where you are having a mindset where it's just very focused on, well, five or more and that's it. It's about making sure you're having an open an open mindset to it and not putting yourself in a box where you can't consider someone who may come from a field with the SHRM certification, but ah, they may just have four years in administrator. They could have other experience that would deem them as a highly qualified candidate. To the point of SHRM, when you look at number two for certification in administration, supervision, ed leadership, when you look at human resource management, that would be the one where it would signal like, hey, that's your SHRM credential or other accompanying credential as well. So that's kind of the the antithesis behind it.
I guess my my preference, just for me, where it says other leadership certification, that makes it very, very broad. I would like to see like, you know, the certifications that you all and Mr. Let feels are key to being successful in this role that shows evidence of, you know, being able to handle those difficult risk situations that that arise in this role.
So if I'm understanding correctly, you would like it to be like explicitly listed?
There needs I would, again, this is only me individually, but I would recommend to Miss Moore and the staff, the leadership certification is too broad and to include the highly valued H R specific certifications that we feel that somebody who's really, you know, trying to go for a high-level role like this, Chief Human Resources Officer, would undoubtedly have.
I'll just, I I totally understand. I think that the the bar should be set as high as we can. We want the most qualified person in any position that we have. But unless there, my view is that unless we expect to get a hundred applications that we're going to have to vet, like a there's just a big glut of these type of these people looking for this type of job, you know, then at that time, I say, okay, well, maybe refining it down itself would narrow down the effort to vet real viable candidates, right? But if if we're we're looking at a field where there's not a a large pool of availability, I think it should be more broad because we're relying on the discernment of the interview and them, you know, documenting their ability. No one's going to pass sneak through because they, you know, wrote something on the resume that they that they didn't have. And I do agree with what you said, you you have to take into consideration compensating factors too because there are, like you said, there could be other experiences that that, you know, relate to that that clearly define that person has the skills. So I would almost look at that, leaving it broader gives you more opportunity to field the applications and just even if you have quite a few, you only choose the top ones that you want to interview. So I look at it from just a little different perspective than my colleague here. So, but I think it's well intentioned, but sometimes when you make things too too detailed, then you just you may discourage a good candidate from even putting in their application, so.
Well, I, you know, I've hired folks for my team in the outside role that I have. And when I post job descriptions, I get five hundred applicants even with more tighter controls. And this job market, I mean, people are now, you know, in these blue in these white-collar roles even hiring fractional executives. So I I guess you would have to look at what is your history because you may very well, and if you think every business has H R people, right? This is not a role that's kind of special, it's not like a physician, right? There there are several, even in our smaller Palm Coast area, we could potentially have a lot of folks who who would apply but yet not meet the criteria that we're really looking for, putting additional burden on the staff. But I'll leave it at that.
And we definitely will bring that back and and have more conversation. And and then when we bring this back to you later this month. But how we looked at it is that individual that comes and they already have the SHRM, some of that coursework and those certifications, you know, that just helps that candidate be a better candidate that we're considering. However, if an individual came with the appropriate experience and we believe that they were the best candidate, we would provide professional learning to them as we have done with many of our staff members to get, you know, those certifications if that is something that is is necessary. And so we thought more of the wider range versus the restrictive. Because you're absolutely right, there are H R in so many different areas, but, you know, H R in the private sector versus in the public sector versus the person who comes with school-based experience, that person that comes with some investigative experiences. All of those things are things that we will look at in our consideration as we're looking at looking for the next Chief of H R.
Yeah, I definitely understand both angles, but I think it's more want to rule out somebody who's a good candidate if they, you know, have those qualifications. All right, any other questions?
I was just gonna, I mean, I don't think it it hurts to add any specifics, but I know there's multiple different types of H R credentialing and training. I also know a lot of them are like certificate-based, they're not. So they're fast-paced, you know, you know, a week program, a twenty-hour program, a five-hour program. So I think maybe for district staff to kind of evaluate the different ones specifically for education institutions like public education, see what they're utilizing and see if any of those make sense that would not, like, you know, if there is a good candidate, but potentially they don't have it, but do they have time to get it or something like that? And just see which one would be the best one, best fit for Flagler? Because there probably are some that may be that would make this the Chief Human Resource Officer a good candidate if they had that extra training. But just kind of see what you guys think. That focuses on Flagler and public schools.
And that would be a part of like the professional development for their evaluation process and all of those things. Like all of us are a part of different professional organizations that require a certain training and certifications and such. But we definitely would bring that information back and then we'll bring this forward to you again in two weeks.
I did have just one last question. I don't think so because I don't see that it's marked out, but the salary lane, is it? I'm assuming it's staying the same way because it's not marked out. So that wasn't anything that you thought needed to be changed? Okay, thank you. That was all I had.
Okay. Ten point zero three, Operational Services Job Description.
And kind of as we mentioned with the previous one, we are looking at the Chief of Operational Services job description, making minor edits and to make some other adjustments to the qualifications as it aligns with current hiring trends.
I do like that you added the, well, the accredited was there, but the educational institution, so ensuring that it is accredited, but an educational institution. So I did, I do like that that how it was changed to that.
Any comments, questions?
I thought that and maybe you can weigh in here, but isn't a lot of that role about interpreting also some of the like government regulations around real estate, land use, impact on our enrollments? I'm not seeing anything related to kind of that connection or to liaison with our Palm Coast government or experience in these having that type of relationship unless I missed it.
They added it under Supervisors, if that's what you're talking about. Page one, page one, the very bottom.
Well, as as the district has grown and we've added the position or adjusted the position of Coordinator of Planning Intergovernmental Relations, which was, what, four, four years ago or so? When that position came to be, that was then put underneath the Chief of Operational Services. So that's why it wasn't originally captured the last time this job was reviewed. And that's why you're kind of seeing the swap of Director of Youth Center put off and the Planning Intergovernmental Relations in there as well.
I see. So you're almost, I guess the spirit is that you're saying that these performance responsibilities, they're supposed to infer what type of knowledge, skills and abilities, but you're not specifically assigning them in that session.
Yes.
I get you.
Yeah, because essentially the Chief of Operations has to be knowledgeable in these areas that they are supervising as well, though they are not, you know, they may not be the one directly responsible for the coordination of the planning and intergovernmental relations, but they supervise those individuals and and have to come in with not with knowledge related to those areas.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Can I can I make a comment? New Board, I do see one thing that as your comment about that on number one there, I think that maybe we ought to add under where it says Youth Services, add the Coordinator Planning Responsibilities that I think would address what you.
Because some people might not be comfortable with that. So you really need, that's, again, I don't want to misinterpret, but I felt I definitely went to you a lot for those type, that type of information.
So we'll go ahead and add that on there for.
Yeah. Thanks. Sounds great.
We'll move on to ten point zero four, Federation Agreement with Stetson.
Mr. Tucson Robertson, come join us.
Right, go down through everybody. All right. So we've got a couple of M O U's for some schools that are interested in putting some student teachers in our class.
That's great.
With Stetson University. And they want to put one in very quickly. So they're looking to get somebody in there in this month, actually.
Great.
I think we need to send, we'll get that individual in. And then, of course, the second one is Walden University. They're interested in some individuals in our district as well. All of the, both of these agreements have been vetted by our district attorney. So that's kind of been what the process has been going back and forth, sending them updates and adjustments based upon Mr. Smith's recommendations. And we finally come to a agreement on what those specifics should be.
And I'm just curious, as you say that, you know, they had wanted to get somebody in right away.
Stetson.
Stetson. So what what was the attraction to to for that direct action?
Well, I know for Stetson, there's a individual who wants to work for Mr. Seth. Mr. Seth was a band director there for a short amount of time. And so I guess through that connection, there's somebody that wants to work under Mr. Seth and gain that experience.
And then for Walden, we have a local individual that is a tent in Walden that is doing some work within our district already that is going to be in intern for counseling.
All right. Also, any questions?
Yeah, so with, because I know we have a few of these, do we have any idea how many, like the student teachers that we have hired after? So because this, I mean, obviously, these partnerships are great. I'm just thinking, you know, do we have any numbers of like?
I can't speak to that at the moment. What I can tell you is I know since I've been at this position, we've pushed through several M O U's, bachelor students coming in, but currently I can't recall the students that have been hired.
And with these two, we have potential leads that would obviously, which is great. So this, these are really great partnerships, so thank you for always looking at those. And my second question is for the Walden one, the the date. And again, there may be a reason already, but it has, it already has effective date of November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. So I just wanted to know if that.
That'll be adjusted. That was when our original, when we.
Like the original thought process of it? Okay, so, all right, I just wanted to ask about that. Otherwise, thank you for finding these partnerships and potential new hires for the future.
It's it's wonderful. And she does a bridge up coordinating between universities, our certification specialists, so that they can have those pathways. I mean, not only Walden and Stetson, but we've had a longstanding partnership with Daytona State where they've come through and we've seen those folks come all the way through the program and they stay to be hired on full-time. So that's just an example of how these pathways are helping our students.
Or become Rookie of the Year like that apprenticeship instructor. So I heard she was, I'll keep talking about her because I think and that stood out. That was, I mean, it's it's really nice. So, yeah, thank you. That's all that I have.
We move on to ten point zero five, we'll move on to ten point zero six.
All right. School Board, this item here for the Professional Salary Matrix reflects a clerical adjustment to the Professional Salary Schedule to include the Senior Enterprise Systems Engineer position, which was approved by the Board in twenty eighteen, but was inadvertently omitted from the salary schedule. No change to the position, funding or compensation is being requested, but you can see it there under, I believe it's P A L four.
P A L four. And what typically is the requirement or skills that is necessary for the Senior Enterprise Systems Engineer?
So so with that, it comes with additional certification that they've maintained through, you know, their time with technology. So for instance, our Senior Data Systems Engineer has a team under them of other data engineers, right? data engineers, right? So they're being tasked with making sure that team runs efficiently and effectively.
And this isn't like, this isn't a change in person or any of those things? We're just making sure that it is reflected on the salary matrix because we, we realized that it was not there.
So was this individual already in that salary lane?
Yeah, they've been in that position already. The, the title was dropped off of it as we add more lines, and so you couldn't see it. So that's what we're correcting.
So it was always in PAL dash?
Yes, yes. There's absolutely no change to the employee that's in there, the role, any of those things. Just making sure it's.
And following the discussion from the Behavior Analyst position, which is also the under PAL four, we'll probably also go to add that name or that job title as well. That way, it's all together when it goes to the Board for the next meeting.
We'll move on to ten point zero seven.
As you guys are aware, these are the working agenda items for the month of January. It will continue to grow and adapt between now and the next Board meeting, but I'm here to answer any questions.
I just appreciate you taking the time to discuss with me the items specific to the terminations. I appreciate that.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Walker.
All right. Thank you, Board.
Operational Services, eleven point zero one, Ms. Davina.
Good afternoon, Board.
Hello.
You have before you the interlocal agreement, the resolution for the interlocal agreement with Volusia County Schools. If you would recall, as May twenty twenty five, we entered into an agreement creating attendance boundaries for both Flagler and Volusia County Schools. And the term of that agreement is it's renewable every year with a resolution confirming those boundaries. So this resolution is just confirming the boundaries, it was not, those boundaries have not changed. And it's going to renew the agreement for another year. And if you have any questions?
Very thankful to Volusia County for working with us.
And Volusia is also bringing this to your.
Yes. Tonight, they are, the Board is going to approve or disapprove, but they're going to consider the resolution tonight for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you.
Eleven point zero two, Policy seventy four thirty point zero one.
For you, we have Board Policy seven four three zero point zero one, Environmental Health Program. This is a technical correction to a policy. What we're, what I've been doing is going through some of our annual plans or websites that need to be updated annually. Noticed that this said on here is annual, semi-annual sanitation certification. And when I got with Mr. Baker, he said these certifications come out annually, not semi-annually. So it's just a technical correction that would be made to our policy.
How does NEOLAs catch and/or personalize those types of kind of frequency items within their policies? Because I would imagine that it's kind of like a blank and could change, or is that state statute where it's always annual, or is it?
I believe that's state for the inspection, for the sanitation certificate, and then the inspections are three times a year.
So when you catch this, are you sending it back to NEOLAs because there was a misalignment there?
Correct, I notify them so that they have that information with their policies.
Okay, great, thank you.
Should they be the ones catching, making that catch though? Or is this just when?
Some, I'm, I hate to assume, I would think some states with, that NEOLAs works with may have a semi-annual certification that goes through. And this is something that, you know, in, when we were writing, going through with NEOLAs all the policies, something that could have been caught at that time, but somehow slipped through.
They probably default to the more frequent so that nobody gets in trouble, right?
Yeah, and for us, as Mr. Sanfilippo stated, he's going now through all of our policies, all of our procedures, our manuals, all of those things.
Did you make her angry?
And so he is catching some of those things maybe a little bit sooner because we are in that work right now to ensure that our procedures are aligning to the new policies.
I appreciate that because.
Me too.
Yeah. Well, I think especially when you meet with other districts or just in any type of policy, I feel we are really prepared and ready, and if not, it's, you know, you're mitigating. So it's been pretty nice.
Definitely.
I would just, I mean, I would just say commend this Board for taking it on because it is something that we, we needed to do. When we think about how many times we've discussed policies with this Board versus if we were to go and look in the past, and nothing against any of those individuals, but we needed to look at this as relates to the policy and as it relates to our procedures so that we are in alignment. And so I commend you as a Board for taking it on, and I thank Mr. Sanfilippo for working with all of our departments to ensure that our procedures align to the policies.
Mr. Baker. Round to twelve point zero one. School Board Policy seventy one hundred point zero one.
This, this is a revision to a policy. And just for sake of our, for the public, with technical corrections to Board Policies that comes to you, then they can send item at the Board meeting where when it comes to something like this, the next two policies where revisions or new policy, they would come for fruit to advertise, will advertise for twenty one days and then go back to get the approval. But do you have Ms. Lisa Davina here, she's going to explain a little bit about seventy one hundred point oh one, some changes?
So the policy on growth management memorializes the interlocal agreement and some with the interlocal agreement with Flagler County and purpose of city planning. And also some statutory provisions on concurrency and interlocal relations. The revisions for this policy incorporates, like it said, statutory references in the body of the policy, like, for example, we, one six three three one seven seven, which is intergovernmental planning, and one six three three one eight zero one on the collection impact fees. We have also removed and or updated terms to conform with the ILA and to state requirements for educational facilities, which is the SREC, which defines how we design our campuses. We have also tightened the language on some, some, on, on, on the policy to comply with ILA verbiage, we have deleted, added, refined or clarified. For example, Section A on sharing of information, we added the availability of the work plan with regards to the meeting schedule of the work group, work, working group. The problem with that is that the work plan is part of the first meeting of the working group, but in the most recent two years, the DOE had been very late in getting the platform open. So the working group meetings have been pushed back. But the, the policy will, does include that verbiage from the ILA. Another section is we refined Section D, which discusses the working group and interlocal coordination, and also Section E about local planning agencies and our capacity reporting to them. There's also Section F, we added the timing of the proportionate share mitigation agreements and the mitigation, and also impact fees, who added a language covering administrative costs and how these impact fees are renewed to the school district.
So one of the things that we did, Board, was we sat down with our Concurrent Attorney, Chris Wilson, and had several meetings with him to review our growth policy. Lisa has established some SOPs. So we were looking at what should be an overarching policy as opposed to, you know, getting into the nitty gritty. And so she has established a proportionate share mitigation agreement, SOP, concurrency SOP, and so we were looking at what should go where. So that's why you see a lot of the changes in this document, because this should be a policy and not get into all the details, even though the ILA is another part of this. And the ILA does, you know, outline things that we have to provide there as well.
Any questions?
Would, would some of this language have helped in the preparation of the agreement with Hunter Ridge from the outset and then in the aftermath of all that? Does any of language deal with how those going forward don't look like that again?
I, I think so, and that's why Chris was involved in it pretty heavily, so that we could make sure that we're not going to make those mistakes again. And he looked at it with that in mind. Lisa had mentioned that the working group, you know, the work plan that we do every year, we're still waiting on DOE for them to open that up. They're waiting on the COFT report before they open that up. But we are going to go ahead and meet with our working group next week to give them our enrollment of where we are and then maybe make a change to our ILA, to the dates of that to accommodate when DOE doesn't open up as quickly as we'd like it to.
Well, on the Hunter's Ridge, because we were, we had to renegotiate, you know, we were able to recapture lost interest that we would have received had they paid on schedule. So, but in this, in this provision, would it allow for that in a future arrangement? Or is the, is the?
I think that would probably be in an SOP.
Okay.
When we get into the details of those proportionate share mitigation agreements. Instead of in a policy, we would detail that in a SOP. And Chris is, excuse me, Chris is helping us with the SOPs as well.
Okay. Yeah, I would just bring it up for the Board to be mindful of that when we're coming across those things again, because, you know, I feel sometimes, and I don't, I can't speak what, what the motives were in this case, but, you know, it's like, hey, we've got some free leverage over here, so let's, let's take it where we can get it, right? Where if, if it was a, if it was any other scenario, a bank or everything, other than as they would call a default, there would be consequences. But, oh, it's just the school board, you know, let's just ride it out and, and, and get, you know, free time from them, you know? And again, I'm not saying that, I'm not going to speak to why their motives for doing that were, but just to be ahead of that type of thing in the future. That, that agreement was written so long before all of us anyways, or for many of us on the side of the table. But nevertheless, just to bring awareness to that.
The, the provision on the proportionate share mitigation in the interlocal agreement will proactively address those issues in the future. So the PSMAs, the agreements will define if they have a default, then they lose the credit and then they have to go through the process.
Okay. So there's some consequences.
Another question. We'll move on to twelve point zero two, Policy zero one.
Will Mr. Smith come up? We're, so new policy, proposed policy for student representation at the school meetings?
Ladies and gentlemen of the, of the Board and Superintendent Moore, this policy, Policy one forty one point one is designed to codify that which is already in practice. It's designed to codify the rapport between the, the two separate high schools and the Board and also seeks to ensure that the advisory role played by the two members shall be of the pleasure of the Chair. Besides the obvious mistake with, or edit that's needed for the, with the numbering there, are there any questions that the Board has?
Oh, I was, so orientation for students, for the specific students, how, do we know that process yet, or that would be something?
Yeah, we do provide an orientation to them. We can get that added to that, that the Superintendent will provide an orientation to them, because we do currently do that.
I think, because that was my same question, that's already in here? I think the question is.
I thought we talked.
The question is, is that's in practice already, and so this isn't a new piece? And that's not going to be administratively difficult to?
No.
Okay.
It is in practice right now.
And another point, I, I wasn't sure, but do, you know, when we're in a school Board meeting, do they have access to Board Docs? I imagine they do like anybody else because those are public documents. But if we're given, let's say, information about an expulsion, something that has to be conferred on not at a public meeting, let's say, you know?
They typically do not.
Then, and we have processes that make sure that they do not receive them.
Yeah, they do not, yeah, yes.
Yeah, that's why I was referencing that the way we have written it here is that the Chair can, at her discretion, determine, you know, what, what we share with them and also what, what they'll be asked to advise on, you know, that type of thing.
And what we wanted to do is make sure that we did not limit their ability to speak less than would, would be available if they were in the public. So giving them the opportunity to have a public comment or comment towards the action that the Board is going to be, what's going to be brought before the Board, however, that when it's time for the Board to engage in conversation around an individual topic, that will be through the elected school Board, and then the Board Chair could ask a question of those members if the Board Chair deemed appropriate.
So my question is, I've seen in the past, and I believe we, at this current Board has asked in our discussions the perspective of the student representatives. Are we saying now that the practice is to ask the Board Chair, Board Chair, maybe we request the perspective instead of a Board member asking the student representatives directly?
I think the intent in drafting one forty one point one was to make it so that at the Chair's pleasure and then, you know, as a, I'm sure, most likely the Boards, to determine, you know, when and to what degree they'll anticipate.
So could a member bring it up to the Chair?
Yeah.
Like, and then, yeah, so I just.
Right, but just not directly.
That's something that you, you all could determine.
And what we want to make sure that we are empowering them to have voice, but also making sure that we are being protective of them as students as well as engage in different conversations.
Well, I, I appreciate you working on this. I know other districts have policies on it, so I'm glad that we have potentially a policy for this.
Yeah, and many thanks to your suggestion, advice.
Thank you.
Glad to see some clarity for our student representatives, so thank you.
And they do a great job, so.
They do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, twelve point zero three, Teacher's Program Extension, Ms. Johnson.
Hello.
I didn't see you hiding back there. Hello.
The purpose of this particular extension is to take the current MOU that we have with Advent Health with its original end date from July twenty first, twenty twenty six through to December thirty first, twenty twenty six from outset to keep that back to. 2026, from outset, to keep that accurate.
There are no other changes outside of the date have been made to their agreement and that is to give an opportunity for us to really collaborate on what the next iteration of our agreement will, will look like. And so that is the intent behind the change.
Okay. So you're saying that this is essentially something to make sure that our current agreement doesn't run out, but our current agreement does need to have work done to it? Is that my understanding?
Well, it's just time for us to look at it to say, you know, what will this look like in, in the future? I'm sure many of the things that we have found success as two organizations together will remain, but it'll be an opportunity for us to make additions as necessary. When the original agreement was written, we didn't have a medical program at Matanzas High School. However, Advent has supported the implementation of that program and has been instrumental in that program as they were with the original intent. And so I do think some additional things will be codified, just things that have changed since the time that that original agreement was put into place. But I don't foresee them not wanting to support us in a significant manner.
Great. They've been a wonderful partner.
They absolutely have.
Yeah, and it's, it's good to see that that's most probably going to continue somewhere.
And that, and I will just like kudos to them because they were the ones that did come and say, let's extend this so that we aren't rushing to look at and we can really have, take some time to identify what we want the next agreement to look like. And so, you know, I appreciate them and they've been great partners to the district as well as to our foundation.
Do we have anybody for public comments?
No, there's no.
On to board member requests.
I had one and nothing urgent, but I know we've been talking a lot about updating, like, the job descriptions and all with, like, the salary matrix. So I kind of wanted to see if we could have district staff come up with what the plan would look like if we potentially, because I've heard this just multiple times, the salary matrix is, it needs updated. You know, it's been a while, but I do know it's a lot of work and time. So I would just like to see if maybe we could get an update on what that would look like, so not necessarily starting it, but this is how long it would potentially take. These are the steps, processes, the fees, the cost, just to get an idea, because I know eventually we're going to have to somehow update it, because I'm hearing it a lot. And so when you hear something more than once and twice, so that's my request. So just some type of.
And we do have that on the board. I want to say it's for either the January, the last January meeting or the first February meeting to bring some information back to the board related to this topic. So we will definitely do this.
Along with descriptions too, like, so job descriptions and the salary matrix kind of combined, so. So that's it for me.
So today we had a student who was hit while crossing 100 going to FDC. And I'm hoping that they will be all right. And, you know, it's, it's got to be a scary thing. But I live in Seminole Woods and coming out of Seminole Woods onto 100, I've seen several times where when you can make a right on red, people are so focused at looking at the traffic coming on, they're not paying attention to that pedestrian crosswalk. And my understanding is that from, from communicating with Mr. Bossardette, that this incident did occur from a right on red. And I would be interested in us opening some discussions with the city and the DOT around potentially restricting right turns on red for both Bell Terr and Seminole Woods where it crosses 100 when the pedestrian signal is green and to hopefully improve the safety of our students passing what is essentially now almost a six-lane highway.
On Bell Terr, not just add in, it does have that, but I'm wondering what, if it doesn't have it on there, so maybe just that.
And full dog drive, I believe.
Who's our liaison?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just wondering if that's something that we?
I was going to wait. Your heart and mine is in the same place.
Sorry.
No, no, it's all good. I just want you to finish your thoughts because I, I was going to bring that up as well. Are you?
I'm done.
Okay. Yes, this is very disturbing and concerning about the growing amount of accidents and injuries with the e-bikes. I think they are, they're great tools of transportation. They're fun, but they are called e-bikes, but no one is, no one's pedaling anymore. They're, they're hitting the button, going full speed at, at all the time. And so, and that was one of the tipping points this morning was hearing that again, because it's just many incidences that I have heard of. And I, I was actually, I got that text just in time because I, I had a meeting this morning with the, with the traffic safety team and I brought that up. And what, when the discussion we had, there is some legislation that's out there that is going to be worked, that's proposed, that is going to require some certifications on certain bikes to go over a certain speed. And so, again, not to debate the, the legislation that's coming or not going to pass, but I believe that as a community, as a, as a school district, we need to take a proactive role in educating some safety protocols for our students, especially because they are using them as transportation to and from school. And I don't know the amount of students that are actually using that, but I know that there are some. But, but I will tell you, there's a, there is a difference and I, I've witnessed it. They, because when you're pedaling a bike, when you stop pedaling the, the bike, if you're distracted for a minute, the bike has a weight, it kind of comes to a stop. These kids are just hitting the gas and, and going, going, and they're running into things, they're not paying attention, they're not, they're not, it's tunnel vision. They're not thinking like driving a car. And essentially, they need to have some, I think we need to have some safety education that we pass on with a, maybe with partnership with the Department of Transportation or with the sheriff's office or something to, for these simple things. You know, that, the statement of, in, in this case, that the student was not likely at fault here, right? Because they had the right of way, but you don't want to be dead right, we always say, right? So we need to train them to say, just because you may have the right of way, you need to look also for the possibility of that car turning. Most kids, I don't think, are, are even, that's not even in their mind about that. They don't understand traffic patterns and traffic laws. So I think some, some basic fundamentals that we can send out through, through our social media, through some instruction, because I'm really, really worried about this. And I, I was out, and I have, I have an e-bike and I was out the other day and I actually looked and I only saw one other person on a pedal bike, an adult, and, and the rest were a mix of adults, kids on e-bikes. So they're, these are the growing trends for the future. So I'm, I'm right with you. And I will be working with that team there. There, I was hearing there may be some grants available through the Department of Transportation for some of these things. I don't know if we'll be eligible for them, but I will pursue, pursue that information. So that, that's where, we're on that right there.
But living in that section, I've seen where several times cars almost hit both a pedestrian and a traditional bike. I'm not concerned about, I'm not saying this is a problem with e-bikes. It's a problem where we have a six-lane road, somebody's making a right on red and not paying attention to the crosswalk. We have other areas in town where right on red are restricted. And it would only make sense that in an area heavily trafficked by students coming out of Seminole Woods who need to walk to school or ride their bike to school, protection for students traveling across that 100 is pretty critical. And I believe they can even restrict it to certain times of day, because I know they're worried about traffic congestion as well.
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring up that, I will bring up that specifically, because, yeah, that is a clear spot where we've identified there is a problem. So I'll bring that up.
Is this a Pomco's issue or founded or?
It depends on where it is, but what, what our team will do, Mr. Freeman as well as Mr. Bossardette will work directly with Mr. Hurry to make sure that the concern that's being brought forward about the no turn on red is brought forward to that traffic team. I will add that we have scheduled, Mr. Foley, can you give me the date? We have scheduled right now a recording that we are going to be doing with the city of Palm Coast as well as the sheriff's office around e-bikes specifically, to begin to work together and have communication going out to our families and more importantly, to our students directly around the new ordinances and then some safety pieces. So it'll be a collaboration between the city of Palm Coast, the sheriff's office, and Flagler Schools to get this information out. So that's already, yeah, so that's already on the books to get that done. We anticipated doing it sooner, but, you know, there are some other pieces that need to take place and we, we do have that on the, on the books and we'll get that done.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could, obviously, the safety of our students is of paramount importance to the school district. Just a word of caution that there are limitations though on what the district's legal responsibility is for students who are off campus at a non-school event. So coming to school or after leaving school, there are limitations on our legal responsibility. This is something I've had some personal involvement with, cases that have gone to the Florida Supreme Court on this issue. So we do want to proceed cautiously because a creative plaintiff attorney could certainly say, well, the district was aware of a problem, did some training, but could have done more training for students or could have taken these other actions that can be viewed as opening the door where liability doesn't currently exist. So just my recommendation would be to have your legal team look closely at the superintendent to make sure that while we're being proactive to help students stay safe, we're also not opening ourselves up to a lawsuit for frankly, things that we don't have the authority to control. Students are off our campus, not during school events and, you know, DOT signaling and things like that, which the school district doesn't control.
Yeah, and that's great advice for sure. And, you know, I'm thinking more along the lines of like PSA and things like that rather than physical training, but who knows how that, how that comes forward. But I think of it just like how we tell kids how to cross the street, you know, wait for the crossing guard. I mean, there's some elementary rules that are out there that could, could save lives, so.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Okay, any other? We'll be launching those accounts.
So first I want to say the chatbot that we have on our website has been very helpful for myself as a parent, finding forms. So parents just know that if you're looking for a document that you need specifically for your child or for yourself, there is the chatbot and it's, it's getting better and improving, but it only gets improved by feedback. But thank you for that. So, and speaking of forms, so another thing, if you're looking for a form, you can't find it on the website, it could be a Sunday, you know, and that's why I use the chatbot. So thank you for that. It's working great. And just wanted to thank all of our campuses. They've been continuing even throughout all of our holidays and coming back to keep our families engaged through many family-friendly events. So speaking of that, parents and guardians, just make sure you're watching your parent square. Those are where opportunities pop up, where it may be an event that you may want to attend or your child, different school-based activities. And there's just so many different things that you don't want to miss out on, so keep an eye on that. And I've had the opportunity to meet with most, almost all of our teachers and rookies and employees of the year, so a few more that I'm going to meet with. So it's just been such a pleasure and privilege to hear from them and their stories and their passion. But for everyone, all of our staff and instructors, so thank you for everything you're doing. And district staff, thank you for all the updates and helping. And I hope everyone has a wonderful week. Welcome to 2026.
Yeah, just excited to see the energy for the second semester going on in our campuses and the students returning full vigor, ready to take on another semester of learning. The '90s dress-up day was pretty fun to see. I'm also excited to represent our school district with additional board members and Dr. Orion and our lobbyist, Sarah Brothers, later in the month in Tallahassee for our Day in the Legislature, where we'll be advocating for the, the needs, both financial in terms of funding as well as providing feedback on statute work that is in progress. And just a preliminary discussion with Ms. Moore around the progress monitoring data. It seems like all signs point towards some great growth and I appreciate everybody's effort to hit that 25 points that we need to achieve this year. Thank you.
Yes, echo some of the comments of my colleagues here. Great to be back. We're reflecting on, it's been a while. We haven't been here since before Christmas, so it's great to be back here in the boardroom with you all and moving flagrant forward. I too am looking forward to our days in the legislature up in Tallahassee. That's always a very informative, effective way for us to get in front of our state representatives and make sure they understand what the needs are here. And it makes a difference when they, when they see our faces and, and we're right in front of them. And I will tell you, it makes an impact. And we've been able to accomplish a lot by making those journeys every year. So looking forward to what comes of that. And again, just looking forward to this new year and all the great things that are, are happening. And thanks and have a great week.
I'll just share some condolences to Ms. Holly and just praying for her family. Send us some thoughts and prayers. She's a long time employee here at Flagler Schools. I hope everyone enjoyed the Christmas holiday season. It was nice to spend time with everybody and friends. And yeah, just already hearing great things about the new year, so excited to see what comes with Flagler Schools and I will be working on that.
Thank you.
Happy 92nd Day of School. It is, we're off to a great start. Friday, we were able to celebrate the 90th Day of School as we approach going into the 100th Day of School. Just want to really highlight Mr. Foley and Ms. Henderson on the work they've done with our Decades Day. If you haven't had an opportunity to see some of the videos that they produce, highlighting our different schools as they opened through the decades and employees that we have and community members that attended our schools during those decades. And we're going towards the 2000s and so we'll celebrate some schools that were open during, during that decade as well. This is a very, very important time of year. We are living in two timeframes, right? We're living in the 92nd Day of School, but we're also actively preparing for Day One of the 26, 27 school year. And I want to take a moment to really highlight our, for our eighth graders. So all, if you know an eighth grade student, you live near an eighth grade student, you are a parent of an eighth grade student, please, please, please go to our website, go onto the, our social media accounts, because we're pushing out a lot of information around getting them prepared to go to high school. We have our career fairs that are happening on January 20th at Indian Trails Middle School and January 30th at Buddy Taylor Middle School for our eighth graders. This career fair is very unique as we will have businesses in our community represented, but more importantly, we will have our programs of study and our different programs from our high schools represented. And so our students will be able to go and engage with those individuals from both of And so our students will be able to go and engage with those individuals from both of our high schools at each of the career fairs, but we will open it up for families to also be able to come with their children. And so please, 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 take this as an opportunity to come and be a part of this. I know that there's going to be a parent that says, well, you know, some of us work and we can't go, and we are sorry, you know, but we have to work within our staff schedule as well. And then the following week, or following two weeks, our high schools will host nights on their campus. So we'll have at Matanzas High School on February fifth, you can go to Matanzas High School, you can tour their school, you can get information about their course selection, more information about their programs of study, and then we'll do that on February tenth at Flagler Palm Coast High School. Because we do have an opportunity for our students to attend either of our high schools, I will say to our families to go and visit both schools, so you see what both schools have to offer, so you make an informed decision based on what your child wants to do in, wants post-graduation. And then after we have all of that, we will go into course selection time, we will go into control open enrollment time, new, new student enrollment for our VPK students, because I know that's something families are already starting to ask. When does VPK enrollment for new students open? And I want to say March fifteenth, March fifteenth, right there, off the top of my head, somewhere around there, right? March fifteenth. But all of this information is going to be available. Pay attention to the parent square, pay attention to our website, because we will have up-to-date information on our website. We will also push it out on social media. But this is a very important time of year, because our students are going to be selecting their courses, and we'll do the same thing for our fifth graders that are going to be going to middle school. And if you are a family that is a home school, or maybe you are at the private school, or maybe you are at the charter school, we are making room for you to come and be a part of the career fair, as well as the nights at our high school available as well. And I want to just commend Ms. Mariotti-Johnson, because she's working specifically with Imagine Charter Schools, to ensure that our eighth graders there are able to come and join the career fair at Buddy Taylor Middle School or Indian Trails Middle School. And so, great time of year, and we're super excited to begin to plan for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. So please, 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 follow us, but please go to our website to get all the up-to-date information, or use our bot, or our contact us, and we'll make sure we get back to you in a timely manner, and we hope you guys have a great rest of your evening.